Joe, would you lead us?
Call the meeting into order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the May 1st, 2018 Post Falls City Council Meeting. Hard to believe it's May, but I guess the blossoms on the trees are indicative. Shannon will note, all council members are present with the exception of Councilor Thorson, who is excused. Tonight, we have, under ceremonies announcements, we have two announcements. The Idaho Transportation Department is currently updating its Long Range Transportation Plan, LRTP. This is an opportunity for citizens and partner organizations in Idaho to weigh in on the direction of the Idaho Transportation Department to the year 2040. Visit ITD's website at itdidoh, itd.idaho.gov to take the long-range planning survey. And the second announcement is, I was walking in tonight, ran into Brian Myers from our Park Department, who informed me that tonight is the first night of baseball of the newly renovated baseball field up on 19th Street. So that Sportsman's Park, that project has been, excuse me, been under construction for several months, and tonight they're kicking off the baseball on the, I think it's probably the little kids' baseball on the south side, and Brett James Field, which is a larger field up to the north, will be ready for action in a couple of weeks. So I drive by it frequently, and Dave did a nice job, so thank him. Forest, please. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
We have none tonight, sir.
Any declarations of conflict?
Nope.
Seeing none, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item is minutes from the April 17th, 2018 City Council Meeting. Item B is payables from April 10th through April 23rd, 2018. Item C is requests from the Police Department to auction gun parts and accessories. Item D is Satchwitz annexation agreement. Item E is Chase Acres annexation agreement. Item F is Woodbridge South First Edition Construction Improvement Agreement. Item G is Cash and Investments Report for March 2018. Item H is contract with Ultra Lawn for Landscape Maintenance Services at the Wastewater Reclamation Facility. Item I is 2018 Street Overlay Asphalt Graining Contract with Pavement Recycling Systems. Item J is Woodland Meadows Construction Improvement Agreement. And item K is the Wireless Tower Agreement.
I've got a question. I don't know if it'll be John, or Dave, or who it is, but on the contract for landscape maintenance at Water Reclamation Facility, I know it's a big facility, but that seems like an awful lot of money. Is that something, I know as we continue to grow, we're stretching our own resources people-wise, but that number just jumped out at me.
Sure, it is a substantial investment in keeping that place up, and as you've mentioned, it is a growing facility, and landscaping is growing out there as well. There's really two things I want to address with that. First is price, make sure that we got a good price for you. We looked at doing it in-house, we actually did that last fall, and basically, we would need to hire an additional seasonal worker, just to get the lawn mowed, is the short version of it. It's 15,000, and Dave told me the odd cents per year for six-month seasonal. So that takes a substantial chunk of what we're looking at with 22,000 of lawn mowing expenses out. If you then look at maintenance, and the chemicals, and license for herbicide applications, you wind up getting pretty close to that 22,000 number, especially if you count the overhead for supervisory time. Looking at that, Parks was really in a similar boat. In fact, they didn't quite decline to do it if we really pushed it, but they said they didn't have the resources to really provide that service for us. And then it's really a matter of priorities. We could divert some of our existing staff from projects to do that work, but really, when it comes down to it, our priority is clean water in one way or another, and if we're choosing between that and mowing the lawn, we're most likely going to choose the clean water option. So it really became a matter of priorities for us, knowing the costs were somewhat competitive.
Okay, well, I appreciate it. I just thought that further explanation would be good in light of the costs, so I appreciate the analysis that you did in conjunction with Dave's Department.
Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions on that, too? Because I had similar concerns. I guess, I understand why your staff shouldn't be doing it, but I guess that's, when I come back to Dave, as far as the park's taking care of all of our property, and this makes me wonder, if it's that much cheaper, more efficient, economical, whatever, to do it at the wastewater treatment plant, why wouldn't it be better to privatize it all and just hire outside people to do all the yard maintenance everywhere?
One thing on that, if I can. Just to be clear, when I was looking at my analysis, it wasn't necessarily less expensive to go with a contractor versus having our staff do it. So I want to make sure that was clear in my earlier presentation. It's pretty competitive between the two.
Okay.
I'll let Dave answer.
Yeah. When you look at the overall picture, I mean, you could compare a six-month person on that, but they're not going to be mowing on that site 40 hours a week. So there is a difference in there. We have gone out and looked. That's also in-house, they'll be doing their own irrigation, we have our forests are ready to do the tree pruning and stuff. So it's not a complete comparison, but we just don't have staff right now. We're at a pinch point, and we didn't, we weren't able to, we just had to decline it. So John was being very nice, but we just don't have the manpower at this point. Do I believe we would be competitive? Yes.
So why don't we go, I mean, we're going to spend $32,000 to hire an outside contractor? We can't hire somebody for $32,000?
I can't get the staff. We left five positions open last summer. We're in the same boat again. Even in the streets, on our seasonal positions, we're struggling.
Okay.
Al, you were tired.
Mm-hmm. I'm thinking about it.
I think, I understand what you're saying, is, I guess my thought is, if there's an abundance of people to hire that could do the job, then I would really push, and hopefully in the future, we can do it in-house. But I just saw it because of the dollar amount that we should, should at least address it.
And this is just a one-year contract, so next year, we can reanalyze that, and if the employees that we have, if we're able to hire the additional employees, we can look at that. We have struggled the last two years. I know Teresa's doing another salary survey on the seasonal, and we did increase those, I think around $2 an hour, but we still are having a difficult time filling our seasonal positions.
Yeah. Could I add, it's not just filling the positions, but it's keeping them. It's hard work. We went away to the state conference three weeks ago, two weeks ago. Two of our people that had started just before we left quit while we were gone. You know, we go through a lot of people. So it's hard work. If anybody out there knows of anybody looking for work, we're hiring. We're hiring at the streets, we're hiring at the parks, we're hiring on construction. So for everything.
Is that, are you okay? Do you have another?
Did Linda, did you have a question?
Is there another piece to this, as it relates to equipment, though? Do we have enough equipment if we were to try to do it in-house?
When I said we're at a pinch point, we're at that point with how much land we have that we need, probably a second mow crew, which means another trailer, and probably one more mower. We're pretty good on trailers, but I believe we also have to look at our big trailer for the big mower, or the tractor. We've been informed that we need to go up to the one-ton truck, which limits where we're at, so we're just at that one plateau now that we will adjust, but we're probably a budget cycle away.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity to clarify.
Mr. Mayor, I did have another question. On item K, I was wondering if somebody could help clarify that. I'm not sure.
That's the wireless.
Is this additional, is this going to allow us to cover more area, or why do we?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Council. A good question, Councilman Wolf. It's more, it's, we're joining efforts here with the Street Department as well. So this new wireless upgrade we're in the middle of, for that $550 a month through American Tower, it'll help the Street Department, allow them to access their cameras through the intersections cameras as well. So it'd be a merging deal with them. It'll be paid through impact fees, this whole upgrade's coming out of your impact fees. But what it'll allow us, it'll allow us better coverage. We've tried to negotiate with American Tower. I know Councilman Borders, and I spoke of this earlier, they put the tower up, they kind of set the fee, and here's what it is. It's the only tower in town that we'll pay to have access with at this point in time. We've allowed to, you know, through the history of the department, we've always been able to put them up on streetlights and things of that nature. But this tower agreement will be a joint purpose between us and the Street Department.
Okay. Appreciate the clarification.
Yep.
Thanks, Chief.
You bet.
If no other questions, then entertain a motion. Move to accept the consent calendar as presented. Second. Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item up is public hearings. Tonight, we have none, followed by unfinished business, and tonight, we have none. Citizens' issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. And if anyone cares to address council, please come forward and give your name, and we'll give you five minutes. Seeing none, we're going to new business. First item is... Sorry, my computer keeps jumping on me. The first item is Meadow Vista Planned Unit Development. Mr. Manley.
It's taking a bit to load up here. It's a big development, huh? Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, and other members of City Council. John Manley, Planning Manager here at the City Post Falls, introducing the Meadow Vista Estates PUD. You can see the case file there. The owner is Chapel Meadows LLC, with the applicant's rep for the owner being Ace Solutions. The requested action is to review this proposed PUD and approve, along with any appropriate conditions that you may see to be deemed necessary. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this at their March 13th hearing and recommended approval. The location is just east of Howell, north of Fisher, and south of Prairie. It's just the southeast corner, you'll see it a little bit better here in a few slides. Approved zoning for this currently is R1S. Size is just about nine acres. It's currently vacant. There's no known topology or vegetation issues with this property. East Green Acres would be the service provider for water at this site, with sewer being provided by the City of Post Falls. So here's the location here at the southeast corner of Howell and Prairie. I do want to denote, as I go into some slides in a bit, as part of this PUD here, Craftsman and Meadows, that there is a open space trail that kind of goes along the northern boundary and links to an open space to there with that PUD that connect to this, and there'll be details to show that here coming forward. The PUD development plan is, as you see here, it's Arrow Leaf Lane would come up around and come down. The plan, before the Planning and Zoning Commission, was to exit out as a one-way, but through that public hearing process, there was some public testimony, and it was agreed upon that that would be a two-way entrance, and there was a condition that's a part of the findings that went before the staff report, for you guys, that kind of reflected this, and I'll show that here in a bit. But that's in that area here, in that red box, I mean, that red oval. Lot 14 is this lot, and there's also, as part of that condition, that they could allow that to modify its size to accommodate that two-way travel. And then what you see here is the perceived opens, the proposed open space running along the eastern boundary, and run from the eastern side along the southern boundary to the west, connecting to Howell and Prairie. How that's significant is, it will allow the, this development, and any of those coming to and fro, access and a better utilization of that open space collectively, kind of working together as a system. Here, you see, I kind of looked at how this modified the exhibit a little bit, and then you can see here in red box, that's the proposal, there's Arrow Leaf Lane, how it would come out, come down into the west. The reason for that proposal was, there was concern that some of these residences would then filter through Arrow Leaf and have an increase, or an unnecessary increase on Arrow Leaf Lane. So by having two-way onto Howell would allow people to exit and disperse up to Prairie and possibly Fisher, but more than likely, they would go to Prairie as it's, as a higher traveling speed, you could get to your destinations quicker. So here's the condition that's in the findings that's been modified. You can see where it's both access egress, access and egress, and there's that comment regarding Lot 14, they can modify that with that lot. Overall, the proposal is about three lots an acre. This is similar to the PUDs that have been adjacent to Prairie Meadows in that area. Meadow Grove is about three units per acre, Craftsman's similar. So what the proposal is, very similar to the other single-family developments that are abutting higher classified road infrastructure, but also being adjacent to Prairie Meadows. Talked about the common open space, and then the exceptions would be to be consistent with the R1 lots, since the lots are similar to R1 lot in sizing, and then the modified road standard for Arrow Leaf. So looking at the proposal, there's some review criteria that would need to be met, and provides benefits that would not be achievable through compliance, but would normally be required. And so typically, if you just had a straight-up R1 subdivision, or even an R1S subdivision for that matter, you potentially wouldn't get those connecting links, because our subdivision code doesn't require that link to Prairie and Howell. So by going through the PUD, there is an improvement that you wouldn't necessarily get. Then the second one deals with compatibility. So these are all suburban residential developments, so when you look at this area, you have county property, you have these R1 lots that are in the city, and then you have these other smaller lots to the north, and even smaller to the east. These are all within the spectrum of suburban residential. So from planning purposes, the proposed use would be compatible with the other single-family residents in the City of Post Falls. Third one, is it in conformance with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan? The staff report goes into detail, a little more detail, but it would be considered consistent with the goals and policies. Does it provide open space? It does meet the minimum requirement for a PUD, and it should provide for integrated and harmonious design and arrangements of buildings and uses. With the PUD, it doesn't necessarily require, like with multifamily, you get a cross-section and elevation type review of the structures. With single-family, you don't get that part with PUDs, but how they manage to deal with this is more or less through the design, and so it could be considered that, once again, we're going back to that trail connectivity and pedestrian connectivity that are attempting to meet Condition 5 as well. Cooney County Fire and Rescue, they commented they were neutral on this. They did say it was in their district boundaries, and they identified the nearest station being over at 405 North Idaho. These were the agencies that were notified. So at this time, I'd stand for any questions you have for me for the proposed PUD.
I've got a couple for you, John.
Yeah.
First of all, the density. You know, lesson three, I like that. I guess what concerns me, and I know we've done it quite often, is we first went with R1S, then we went with R1S with the ability to allow for two homes per acre, now it's gotten to three homes per acre. I know we've done others, but it's, it's a bit, I guess, of a challenge for me to designate it as one thing, and then allow for higher densities within that. So hopefully, as we address our, you know, updated comprehensive plan, look at our zoning codes, we will address that.
Yeah, our new PUD language that we have actually is, in this type of a situation, it more than likely would need to get a zone change concurrent with that. It's because there's other issues that occur when there's too much disparity. So yeah, this would be a concurrent zone change to R1, giving some flexibility, or a new zone.
Well, again, when you look at the immediate area next to it, you know, it's comparable. It's higher density than the property to the south, but, you know, I understand. But again, just that change has been a bit of a frustration. The other thing is the roads. Now, when you, I read through the comments at the Planning and Zoning Meeting, most of the comments were not against the development, but they were against one access point. So do you feel that this change that you've made will address their concerns on the roads and the access to it?
Yes, I do believe that by having two access points in and out, it will increase the amount of dispersment of traffic, and could encourage potentially more people coming in from the west. There's obviously no guarantee, but I think one could deduce that.
Well, and again, I think the fact that you've increased it from one to two points is moving in the right direction.
I mean, it does bring, down the road, there's some inherent complications, but nothing that can't be mitigated. You have this road to the south that's going to be coming right Hydrilla, and just how this merges with that extra right-of-way, there may be some, you know, some issues there down the road to be fixed, but it more than likely can be adjusted.
My last question is on the open space, and I saw comments in that, and I know one of the Planning and Zoning Commissioners asked about it. So it's open space, but is that truly what it is, just a green spot? Or is there going to be any kind of amenity? And I understand, it's not that big a development, but by the same token, you set space aside, and does it just become grass then, or what's the potential use for that?
Yeah, right now, our code allows for just open passive greens to suffice, you know, and even the new code kind of suggests that. But we did go with the code that we have currently, and kind of like parking, we've had parking lots proposed as part of open space, and that no longer would be included. So we've, swells aren't included. So the new language does kind of offer more guidance, but the term open space does kind of have a loose definition by nature.
I guess personally, I'd just like to see something in there, you know, whatever could be fit in that type of an area, that small one there. Thank you. Steve, you have a question?
Well, that was my question, if there was going to be any amenities, and is there enough space for the neighborhood at a later date to be able to, to their homeowners association, be able to make some improvements to that?
Well, if it's part of the HOA and they own it, then they would have the right to impose whatever improvements they want to on themselves and maintain.
Okay. But right now, the developer's just going to leave, have the trail in green space then?
You know, my apologies, I do see something right in here, but for the most part, it is going to be proposed trail at this point. There may be some benches, you know?
There was mention of a gazebo in the write-up for Planning and Zoning, but I have a question for you, John. If you go back to the first criteria for PUD, it says provides benefits that would be achievable, that would not be achievable. Can you go over those benefits again? I'm a little fuzzy about what do we really gain by giving this up? And I'm with the mayor, I see where it's compatible, but we can't consistently take R1S, which is designed to be bigger lots, and continuously go back and allow PUDs to be in there if we just, we don't have some gain out of it?
So typically, like with open space, that's the trade, you get density for open space. And that's basically been the planning game in Post Falls for my tenures here and the time before that when it originated. We've recently tweaked that game a little bit to add clarity, but to achieve, you could achieve this, like Viking Estates, south of the high school, they have a big one-acre park there. That there, they decided to put that in as part of their subdivision. Here, this is an R1S, and so because we have a PUD and it's allowed by our ordinance, the attempt was, and then there's been attempts to zone this R1, you know, of which we may have still seen a PUD even with R1, we don't know, because we had an R1S. So with a subdivision of R1S property, they more than likely want to provide it open space. So the term achievable is, that you can achieve open space with opens, with a subdivision, just more than likely, you're not going to get it. In this case, with an R1S on a corner of Prairie and Howell, to create eight lots or nine lots, and have some internal access, more than likely, wouldn't develop as R1S. So because of the code we have currently, and the PUD, the way it's framed, and with the underlying zone, R1S, I could deduce that's why we're here looking at a PUD.
When you say it wouldn't be able to develop as R1S, I'm fuzzy as to why not?
Well, because of a lot of access, we have access restrictions off of Prairie, and I believe Howell, I could actually see if Robbie willing to come up and talk about access off Howell, but because of access restrictions, you'd have to come in off an internal road somehow. And then you'd have improvements, you'd still with the subdivision, wouldn't have improvements on Prairie and Howell.
Okay. Guess I'm just a little, we did this recently on, I think it was Meadow Acres or whatever.
Yeah, Meadow Grove, I believe.
But we got a, we got a pretty good sizable park for all those houses. Here, we're just getting a strip of green grass along one side of the, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding the benefits that we're gaining by letting this be basically R1 versus sticking with R1S.
Well, I guess you have that right as a, being on council, to weigh that out for yourself. For me, I'd say that there's some benefits of having pedestrians, the ability, we don't know what's going to eventually develop on the north side of Prairie, we know that's a busy intersection. We know that Prairie Avenue is going to probably become a four-lane, five-lane, with maybe a turn lane in it, so it's going to be a pretty busy road. If, I mean, if we get, let's just say, a commercial use up there 20 years from down, may or may never happen, but residents may want to be able to go on a leisurely walk all the way to the corner of Prairie and Howell, and it may make sense. And then this benefit would, you would see the benefit more in that scenario than, right now, I mean, it seems a little bit questionable potentially, but down the road.
And that wouldn't be possible with R1S? To have that same accessibility for pedestrians?
They could choose to impose that cost on themselves with the nine lots, just like I referred to Viking Estates.
Yeah.
It's, I'm just saying that the chances are that, due to the costs around it and the internal costs, that it would discourage a type of development in R1S.
Okay.
Okay. Do you have any comments? Linda or Lynn?
I'm good.
I'm good, too.
Well, we need a motion.
I would move to approve Meadow Vista Planned Unit Development File Number PUD-0001-208 with the modified Lot 14 for access.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item up is leak refund policy. Mr. Beecham?
I also would like to pull up the presentation. It's not long, but... All right, right presentation even. Good evening, Mayor and Council, John Beecham, Utilities Manager, presenting the leak refund policy. I think Warren summed this, the need for this policy up the best when he wrote the whereas clauses that you might have seen in the ordinance. From time to time, a water utility customer discovers a water leak. This does occur. The damages that occur are really the responsibility of the homeowner or the business owner. What we're talking about is the water cost associated with water that goes through their meter. On a typical leak, this can range from $50 if they find it really quickly, to one that we had last summer was $2,000, and that's just in water charges. We're lucky to have really well-drained soils here. Sometimes that can hide a leak for a matter of weeks until we discover it with our monthly meter reading. In the, this really came to a point with the leak we had last summer, using as an example. Our current code and policy have no, no ability for us to issue a credit to somebody for water that has passed through their meter. If we meter it, that is our point of measurement for sale in the water, and we send them a bill for it. That's really all we have as far as policy and code. So... So what we're looking at is a proposed policy that would provide some discretion for the Public Services Director to authorize up to a 50% refund if certain conditions are met. And these conditions are intended to be a little bit hard to get over. If somebody has a toilet that's running and uses a couple gallons of water, we don't want to be inundated with requests for that sort of thing. So it's intended to be for substantial leaks that would cause a business or a homeowner a substantial financial hardship. When I looked at this, I included a number that says somewhere between probably $1,000 and $10,000 a year in decreased revenue. On the scope of our budget, that's not necessarily something that's within our ability to plan. That's kind of in the noise of our rates or our water usage going up and down. We would have drastically improved customer relations. This is a situation where we're dealing with folks crying on the phone or crying in person if we're meeting with them. And really, it provides relief to customers when they most need it. They're already looking at $1,000 to $5,000 of water repairs, depending on the extent of the damage or even more if their house was damaged as a result of the leak. So I think what we're providing is a benefit to our customers. I am prepared to answer questions if you have any.
My comment, John, would be that, yeah, I like the fact that you're going to make it a little bit difficult so those with a leaking toilet or dripping faucet don't come knocking at your door. But by the same token, when a leak or a break happens, it's typically not the homeowner's fault. And so whatever assistance we can provide, I would be in favor of that. I realize there's some revenue to be lost, if you will. But again, if someone has a leak and gets hit with a bill like that, that can be insurmountable in some cases. So I would ask that, you know, you err on the side of being the good person or the good city as opposed to holding people too much to task. Don't give it away, but, and I know you will. Again, I appreciate the fact that you're bringing it forward. Linda?
I would just like to thank you for that, too, John, because I've seen this happen to a few of my clients where they get a water bill for $650 and call the city. And honestly, the, the water people do run right out there and try to help them. In fact, a lot of times, the water department is the one that calls them and says, you know, you've used so many gallons of water, you must have a leak. And so, yeah, I appreciate and applaud the efforts about this. I would be in favor.
And I should acknowledge, too, we borrowed from a leak policy that Paul Kenny found us. Warren has reviewed this. There's a lot of folks in the Community Services Group that have worked on this. So your thanks should go to them as well.
Good. Thank you very much.
Good work. Now, this, or Steve, what?
I just got, is there sometimes confusion with the different water districts that serve the different, you know, neighborhoods in Post Falls? Is there some time of confusion, though? Do most people think the City of Post Falls is serving their water on that? Because this will only apply to Post Falls residents, so.
That is correct. This will only apply.
The other water districts don't have this type of policy at all, so.
I can't say whether they do or not. I haven't researched that. But you're right, it would apply to water provided by the City of Post Falls.
It's just citizens of Post Falls.
And yes, there is a substantial amount of confusion. There is a map that we have a link to on our website that helps people find it, so.
Yeah, just, I just wanted to clarify that so everybody doesn't think that they'll fall under that policy if they live within the city limits of Post Falls.
Good point.
And we don't need an action on this because that's coming forward in a minute. So there's no further questions or comments. Thanks, John, appreciate it. Next items are the ordinances and resolution and the first ordinance, Satchwitch Annexation.
Move to place the ordinance, Satchwitch Annexation, on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mr. Wilson.
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls, Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, providing for annexation of property consisting of approximately 2.0 acres located at the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 35, Township 51 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, and zoning of said annexed property, a single-family residential R1, providing for the amendment to the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof.
Move to, move to approve the ordinance, Satchwitch Annexation, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next ordinance is Chase Acres.
Move to place the ordinance, Chase Acres Annexation, on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls, Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, providing for annexation of property consisting of approximately 10.4 acres located in the northeast quarter of Section 28, Township 51 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, and zoning the annexed property, a single-family residential R1, providing for amendment of the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof.
Move to approve the ordinance, Chase Acres Annexation, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up is the Leak Refund Policy Resolution.
Move to approve the leak refund policy.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up is Administrator Staff Reports, and there's, just want to discuss whether or not to hold a June 19th council meeting.
So most of the individuals, department heads, will be in Boise for the AIC conference. Sometimes the mayor attends. I'm not sure if you're going to be there or not.
I'm not, country.
And so we have canceled that second meeting in June, most years. So we brought it here for discussion today. And I think Shannon, you'll be down there also for the training for clerk treasurer.
I'll be in Pittsburgh for ADA.
That's right, she has ADA training.
So the question would be, if anything, time-sensitive come forward, we could have a call-in council meeting like we have in the past?
Yes.
But in the past, we've had some of those where we have to make a quick decision, then it sits for three months. So hopefully, we can pick and choose if we do, in fact, need to have one. But I think most everybody's available if that's the case.
That being said, anybody opposed to canceling the second meeting in June?
It's okay with me.
No. But you need, you need a motion to do so.
Okay, yes.
Need a motion?
Yes, I believe so, since it's a posted, it's a posted meeting, so.
Move to cancel the June 19th City Council meeting.
Second.
Further discussion. Please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Mayor comments, don't have any tonight, so it's pretty quiet. Linda?
I would just like to thank Jamie Davis and the Post Falls Chamber for another wonderful business fair out there at Greyhound Park. We had a lot of people, and the mayor helped put up and haul people's booths, equipment around, and.
They had me do something I was capable of.
Yeah, and I think most of us were there, and it was a big success. So thank you to the chamber for that.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, I'd like to announce that Specialized Needs Recreation Annual Talent Show is this Saturday, May 5th, at the Real Life Ministries Church. Doors open at 5:30, admission is $5. They have food, drink is available, raffles, silent auctions. And this year's theme is SNR's Got Talent. But this is really, I've attended several of these, and it's a great event. And just to see the pride these participants take, they've been rehearsing now for about six months to put on this talent show. And it's a family affair, but also there's a lot of people just attend it, and it's a fun evening. And just would like to encourage people to go out and watch these talented kids.
Thank you. Lynn?
I want to thank the Idaho Central Credit Union folks for going out along the freeway this weekend and picking up trash. It's been a big pet peeve of mine for a long time to see all of the trash. And this is getting worse and worse, all the way from state line to through corridor lanes. So they spent the Saturday, at least this weekend, out picking up trash along the freeway. I appreciate that.
Have you ever done that?
Yep.
It is not fun.
I know. It's something that needs to be done.
Yeah, it does, but it is not an enjoyable way to spend a day.
I know ITD doesn't have the manpower to do it.
Right, so all those groups that do donate their time is much appreciated.
Yep. I'm good.
Joe, you okay?
So it was last Saturday, CrossFit Post Falls over in Third Avenue held their fourth annual K-27 memorial and fundraiser for the Cootney County Police and Fire Memorial Foundation. And we invited the Post Falls PD to show up on this report, and it seemed like about half of them showed up at some point. So we really appreciate the support on that. Doug and Amy put a whole lot of work into that event, and there was almost 60 participants. I didn't get the final tally on the money raised, but it was a lot more exciting when the people we're supporting show up and offer support back. So I appreciate the PD's effort there.
Thank you. We do not need an executive session tonight.
We do not.
And the next motion is?
Adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.